Well, call up directors, please. Barnes?
Here.
Baumann?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Gorman?
Here.
Kaiser?
Here.
Maple? Yes, Neil?
Yes.
Topcheck?
Yes.
Zebra?
Yes.
All present. Okay. I have three pledges. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, item four, approval of the agenda. Okay, we have a motion by Mike Kaiser and a second by Mark Lewis. Any questions? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item five, approval of the minutes. Approval of minutes from the regular meeting, August 21st, 2018. Are we needed a motion?
I'll make the motion approve.
How's that?
Okay, we have a most by, uh, I'm sorry, a motion by Jessica and a second by Amy. Any questions?
Just five eight, right?
This is just five eight, correct. Uh, any other questions? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item five B, the annual meeting, August 28th, 2018. This is a review only.
I'll make the motion to approve minutes for August 28th.
Okay, we have a motion by Kelly Zebro, her second.
Oh, to review?
Yes, that's right.
It's approved next year.
Yeah, good.
Yep, we're just reviewing.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna move on to item six. Unless anybody has an answer. Anybody have any questions about the annual meeting minutes before we look at those from next year? We have a whole year to look at.
You can't have questions next month. It's on the general item.
All right, item six, public forum. The public forum provides the public with the opportunity to ask questions about or address issues included on the school board agenda, meeting agenda. General operating rules of the public forum will be determined by the board president. Once the number of people wishing to speak is identified on the night of the meeting. Prior to addressing the board, please clearly state your name and address and share with the board what agenda item you are speaking to the board on. Right now, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to the board? Okay, well, we'll start with, I'm sorry, can I stand up first?
Yeah. Um, Angela Nahuda, um, 154660 Sandy Creek Road. It'll take awhile. I think we're all getting there. Okay, and I'd like to, um, speak about the support staff compensation model.
Oh, do you wanna do it together?
Do, do you want me to, do you want me to start? Go ahead. Yep, yep. Okay. Um, so, on behalf of our seven general education elementary school assistant employees, we are asking you to keep us in the special education, library, and health room assistant category so we can keep our current wage that we all receive written confirmation of. Uh, back in April of this year, Carrie Napolowski and I talked to former superintendent Anne Schultz about the compensation model and the category we as general education assistants were put under. We stated that we believe that we should be put in the same category as special education. We presented the facts that to her, to her, that because we work at the elementary school, we are CPI certified and have specialty, and have a special education license. On a daily basis, we work with children who are special ed and children not yet identified as special ed, as some do not qualify for services until third grade. At the conclusion of our meeting, Dr. Schultz said that she couldn't give us an answer because she needed to get board approval first. About a week later, she came to the elementary school to personally tell us that it was approved. On May 3rd, we received revised letters identifying us as special education assistants so we could be at the higher pay rate effective July 1st. Between receiving our letters and beginning of the school year, four new assistants were hired at the elementary school with a job posting stating they would be starting at fourteen dollars an hour. Three days into our new school year, we all received letters from Mr. Zimmerman saying that we do not qualify to be special education assistants and therefore will be reduced to the general education pay rate. The letter stated that if we would like to stay at the fourteen dollar an hour pay rate, we would have to take a special education job as soon as one opens up, no matter which school it is at. We were all stunned as to how this could be possible. Katie Caldwell talked to Brent on our behalf to try to find a solution. The assistants requested a meeting with Brent on Monday, September 10th. The assistants, along with Jeff Sodenberg and Katie, met with him to discuss our concerns. After explaining everything we do at the elementary school, Brent stated that he would talk to the board about our situation. We would like you to know that our jobs at the elementary school are very different than that of an assistant at the middle school or the high school. Jamie Crowsey and Jeff Sodenberg can vouch for this. We truly are a mix of both general and special education assistants. Besides our normal duties, we work daily with children individually and in groups. Most of the time, the children we are working with are children who are struggling, have behavior issues, or both. Starting in October, the assistants will also be taking children for wind time. We invite anyone to follow us around to see what we do in a day because we work with all kids. We know now that Dr. Schultz never consulted the board about our pay raise. We do not feel we should be punished for something, punished for someone not taking the proper steps. This has given our new employees a very sour taste of our school district, so much so that we have lost an amazing new assistant, Jennifer Wise. She stated that she is not comfortable staying in the Mozeney School District if this is how they treat employees and returned, went back to the Stevens Point School District. Our hope is that after hearing this, you will find a way to keep us in the same category as special education, library, and health room. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Okay, my name is Jamie Crowsey. I live at 141322 Lenz Lane. Also have the six digit. Um, I am new to the elementary school, but I have been at the middle school for three years. I just also wanted to go off of what my fellow coworker also, um, said and, um, sorry. Um, so, some of the things too, like she said, that we do work on a daily basis with the kids that are struggling, that are higher needs. Um, we are doing the wind groups. We're gonna be helping the teachers with reading groups. And I personally worked over at the middle school. I was worth, with fourth and fifth grade. And even though I was general ed, I very seldom had those job titles that I do over here. Because they, it was more delegated in the middle school who was special ed, who was general ed. Not saying it's right or wrong, it's just like how it worked over there. And it was, it was a flowing thing that it did. Um, sorry, I lost my train of thought. Um, one of the other things that, um, yeah, sorry. Got more nervous than I thought it would be. Um. Sorry. I just completely lost my train of thought. All I wanna say is though, that I would really hope that you consider what we do, um, over with the elementary school. It is a big job and we really care what we do. We work well with our teachers, we care about our teachers, and we don't wanna have to tell them that because we're no longer labeled as special ed, that we're not qualified to work with the students. We don't wanna ever tell somebody no. All of the children at Mozeney Elementary School are so important and you have such a well-oiled machine over there. So, we just wanna continue doing what we're doing and not stop anything for anybody. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask, I'm sorry ma'am, but the first figure we had, it appeared that you had what you told us written down and I'd asked that that be entered in the minutes.
She has copies.
Do you mind sharing that Angela?
How many, um, copies would you like? Well, um, we got, we have, um, the copy there. I also have copies of our pay wages with our names on it, everything that we received.
I think if you just, I guess my request is that you provide Amy with a copy of what you read. So that it can be read. So it can be part of the minutes.
Okay, I'm sorry, was I just going to? Marsha?
Sure.
Okay.
Dear Board, my name is Marsha Kowalski. I live at 145628 booklet lane in Mozeney, that's Beanzetti by the way. I'm addressing 9D. I would like to use this time to make a formal request for the Board of Education to carefully review, critique, analyze, and make progressive and equitable changes within the current compensation models in place for both teachers and support staff. The compensation models, which were put into place by our former superintendent, Dr. Schultz, are not equitable. For example, when a loyal, hard-working support staff member has been employed by the district for seven years and then is told that all new incoming support staff members will be starting at that same wage this person has just earned his or her way up to is a slap in the face. Teachers have faced the same dilemma. On June 5th, 2018, I sat in a meeting with Dr. Schultz and a number of other concerned teachers in regards to this compensation model. As almost all teachers who were present were veteran teachers, including myself, we were told, quote, "If you are not happy with what you are earning, you are free to leave the district and go elsewhere for more compensation," unquote. I felt I was not being valued as a long-standing teacher in this community. I feel that way even today. Dr. Schultz further stated that the compensation model was put into place to provide a structure for fair pay advancement. However, at that same meeting, she also acknowledges that, acknowledged that she did not know if she would have any more money for the teachers. If that were truthful and abiding by, or abided by, there would not be any animosity among the staff. While one group of teachers was told that they would have to leave to find better pay, another small number of teachers renegotiated and then received pay scale adjustments outside of the confines and parameters of the compensation model. Fair? Absolutely not. One could even argue age discrimination in this case, as those who are grandfathered at the top of the pay scale and veteran teachers like me have not received a contracted pay increase since 1913, or 2014.
I love what you're on. Do like to it, Carol.
We have only received money for PD points if it was earned. Think about the messages, message that sends to us, the veteran staff, who have been pillars of not only teaching in this community, but of coaching, our service, and mentorship to the district, and in some cases, for twenty-plus years. Fair? Absolutely not. While I know that there are many other issues facing the board at this time, this too is an issue which has long-term and lasting implications as well, not only on our staff, but also on our students. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Let's go next.
Everybody, I'm Jim Lees. I live at 910A Street. Um, I graduated from Mozeney in 2008 and I am currently in my sixth year teaching for the Mozeney School District. Um, you're gonna hear a lot about, I feel, 9D, which is what I wanna discuss about today. And though I don't know what you all plan on discussing with that, um, I'm gonna give you a little history of how we got going on this. But in September of 2014, it was my second year teaching here and Dr. Schultz asked me to be on a committee to help develop the plan that we currently have today. Um, I know that many board members know about the model, but back in 2014, we hired a guy named Bob Butler. He was a really good attorney and he came down and we all, uh, got about, I think it was nine or eleven teachers and principals to come together and create this compensation model. Um, they tried to get representatives from each building, from the elementary, the middle, and the high school. Um, it was told that they were picked at random, but there is some rumors about how that went. Um, over the course of the year, the whole group came together, we worked really, really hard. We reviewed a whole bunch of models from a whole bunch of school districts in this state, in other states. Um, we took these models home to our families, we got highlighters out, and we worked really, really hard to try to develop something that worked well for Mozeney. So, we worked on that through 2014 and 15 and in that spring, we came to the table and we showed all the teachers what was gonna be. Now, what the, um, people that helped develop the model didn't know was where everybody was gonna be placed on that, um, model. And that caused a lot, a lot of drama in our school district, which you're gonna hear a little bit more about today. Now, what, I guess my feelings about it, um, is I'm not here to divulge these issues. You're gonna hear all about it from some other teachers. But my big, big point tonight is I can't stress the importance of this model that we have. Is I do think it's a good model, but I do think there are some issues about where people were placed. I do think there's some issues about some things that are going on. But the model we have wasn't something that we just drew up on the back of a piece of paper and threw at everybody. So, I guess going forward, it's my advice is that you either keep the compensation committee that you have, or you develop a new one, or somehow get some representatives from each building like you had and you discuss the issues you have and then you go forward from there. Um, it's, it's kind of a model that is hard to appeal to every single person in every single building. But for me, I think it provides stability throughout the building. Um, when the bomb got dropped to where every single person was gonna be placed, it created this ginormous rift amongst everybody, amongst young teachers and old teachers and young, middle-aged teachers. And I feel, if you get rid of the compensation schedule you have right now, that a rift isn't gonna get smaller. Um, because you still gotta hire new teachers throughout the year and you're gonna have to hire new teachers next year. If you don't have a model where we can see where we're going up and up, then people are gonna get hired at what they may feel like are unfair wages or another teacher might feel like this guy got hired at something where I should be. Um, I guess, I brought a copy of the compensation model along and since I've been on it for the last four or five years, feel free to ask any questions when you come up with that point. Again, I don't know what you guys plan on discussing with it. But the last thing I'm gonna really stress is, if we don't have this model, it's important to have a model, um, to keep us all stable. Thank you.
Next, go ahead.
Jan Friedrichs, 902 Cronin Wetter Drive, apartment 5. Um, I wanna address 9D and I do have copies, please, excuse me. So if you just wanna grab one and pass them, I have more, that's not enough. Thanks. Um, you've heard, so as you get this, as you get this, I'm gonna skip the first paragraph of this because it's already been represented. There's a lot of concerns on the compensation model and I sort of generalized all of those. But specifically, I wish to address the status of the compensation model for earned professional development points for staff in his or her final year of teaching before retirement. Currently, any payment for compens, any compensation for engaging in earning professional development points is zero. The handbook includes several statements indicating that the Mozeney School Board encourages, supports, and expects teachers to improve their knowledge to contribute to student academic, social, and/or emotional growth. And some of these are, for example, page five, strategic plan. It says that you're gonna prioritize six different areas and three of those that apply to this are professional growth, employee relationships, and fiscal responsibility. On page six, um, for professional growth and team development, um, item number one, our desire to foster greater collaboration for all teachers to continue and learn from one another has been a foundational piece of our compensation model. And then going on, continually promote professional growth and learning at all levels within the model. And it says, "All teachers." On seven, page seven, under employee relationships or relations, "We place a high value on our staff engagement to foster a respectful and positive school climate and culture and we value the strength and talents of our employees." So, personal, professional development points is made in two ways. If you're at the top of the scale, you get an annual stipend. You earn three points or whatever it is and you get the stipend because we're grandfathered and so there's no advancement on the pay scale. So after earning three points, you're supposed to get this compensation. Those who are not at the top get a pay raise, you know, the following year as they make their steps on the current compensation models. But because, either way, I'm kinda jumping around here, but either way, teachers who wish to continue to earn PD points in the final year are not compensated because in this existing schedule, when payment is made in September of the following school year, retired teachers no longer exist as employees, so we're not compensated. Um, in appendix F, the Mozeney School District Compensation Schedule for Professional Educators 6+, it's on page 60, says, "Teachers in tier 6C and those who have been grandfathered at their old salary must earn a minimum of three professional development points annually to earn the yearly stipend." Then, as I read on to page 62 and 63, it says that stipends may be earned by professional educators at the top tier of each level if they have not achieved the PD points needed to move up to the next level. So they don't have to do anything for a year or so and they still get a stipend. But those of us who have earned it, well, I'm not committed yet. I don't know if I'm retiring for sure. But, you know, those who, who retire, um, they, they don't get it even if they've earned it. So, um, and, but it says, "They will be eligible to receive the stipend provided funds are available as determined by the district." So again, according to this, teachers can receive a stipend and do not have to earn it, yet a teacher isn't gonna earn anything if they're in their final year. Okay, so then, again, towards the bottom, I just repeat what, um, Dr. Schultz said to my, best of my memory. "We can't pay you veteran staff in the final year because we do not know how much we will need for salary pay for incoming teachers in the following school year." So, you're pri, the prioritized value is on new, unknown, and untested staff over veteran teachers who have completed the requirements to earn PD points and have contributed to students' academic, social, and/or emotional growth and well-being. Thanks for hearing me.
Thank you.
Is there anything else? I think you. All right, we are moving on to item seven, our student board report.
The board, um, for the Senate of the Board, per these speakers, has talked about the support staff issue. And I had, I've been contacted by members of the community, specifically employees, for this same issue. I made a request of Diane and Brent and Diane to address the issue of a change or changes made to the handbooks that were presented at the first meeting after Dr. Schultz was left. The board should be aware that it appears that several things were changed. We requested that the list of those changes be brought forth so we understand what our interim did after things were agreed to with employees.
Do you have a slip? So you don't know what was changed or what was?
I know what was told, but...
And did this person go to their building leader or just to you?
Yeah, in fact, Tom came here tonight, didn't he?
Yeah, I was making sure, I wanna make sure we're covered, so. Is there anybody else? Um, on one note I wanted to make, I did receive a call last night and Brent, please help me with the lady's name again, Tomlinson?
Yes.
Um, she's gonna be sending in a check for, she was earmarking it for the pool. So, I asked Brent, once we get that money, she would like to donate $5,000 for pool improvement or whatever it might be. So I asked, it'd be nice to follow up with her previous donation, what we've done with it, 'cause she got a letter of thank you, but nothing after that to tell her where the money was spent. So, as well, we get this donation, I'd like us to do the same thing with a nice thank you letter. Okay, item seven, student board report that I see she's not here, but we all did get our information, so.
Charlie had musical practice tonight for Newsies.
For Newsies?
For Newsies, yeah.
Did you want her to talk?
That's fine, you guys. There's a lot of things on the agenda, I think we do.
Okay, thank you. Item eight O, business, discussion on school safety. Brent, did you wanna just touch a little bit on that?
Yeah, we just got done doing the, uh, second round of the safety grant and actually it was a, a bigger amount of money than the first one, over a hundred thousand. But basically, the, the grant, we applied for some additional exterior cameras, five of them. We applied for funding to pick up the balance of the cost on the first safety grant. Because the first safety grant, we basically addressed, you know, door locks and, uh, and the bill came out quite sizable, so we're gonna back fund with that. And then the other thing that, uh, the Department of Justice is really pushing is the secure vestibule. Um, so basically, you'll come inside the middle school and we'll create a, a block wall on one side and a series of glass doors, um, that basically they'll be buzzed in through that second series of glass doors and then they'll be right, right next to the window, uh, at the middle school. And the big gain out of it security-wise is people won't have a leading access to go up the stairs. That's the, the theory. And in essence, you'll have, at the high school, when we're done with the door project, you'll have a secure vestibule there. You'll have one at the elementary school. And after this round of the safety grant, you'd have one there, uh, at the middle school. Also, that would be till summer of 2019. So that's what we applied for, um, in the second round. And, uh, basically, some of the people really wanted to, when we first started about it and they talked a lot about mental health and I said it was Josh and other principals and I, we talked about some of the things that we'd like. You know, we talked about additional police liaison officers. We talked about additional mental health help, uh, you know, uh, variety of different things. But it turns out, in the grant, it basically was no salary positions could be funded. So, we went back to the, uh, infrastructure type items. Cause like I said, you could fund a conference, but staffing wasn't. So, the good thing is, is you'll make the best of a bad situation. With the middle school entrance, obviously, is the most crowded, least ideal, but with the vestibule, you'll get a better, you're building safer in the eyes of the Department of Justice. Is that something they encourage you to do?
The only thing I talked to Brent, we hadn't been in the building at the same time, is that the middle school with the doors and they have that little window and we had to be there without, and it wasn't even school in session and that window got really crowded. So we talked maybe, 'cause they were a little, it'd be nice to show the staff how that's gonna look so they, they have a little bit of idea of where it's gonna all play out.
And Josh is, as I showed it to him, but the thing important to note is Steve just drew, I mean, basically, Brent could draw it. I mean, basically, the architect I had, he drew a wall this way and three doors this way. So, I mean, it wasn't even measured out, it was, uh, basically a rough drawing of what we were looking at. And he'd come back in and talk with the general contractor and get things lined up and he'd talk to Josh to make sure that he knew what was happening. But basically, it's a box with another series of doors, uh, entry.
Did anybody else have any questions for Brent?
I do, in regard to the hand reader, probably up with those.
I talked to the guy this afternoon, so Systems Technology is running that project. Um, he said he estimates they have about three weeks left of work. Um, this is the doors. His first statement was, "You guys got a lot of doors in this school district." Which we, we have our, we have 160 doors.
Yes.
Um, which is more than.
A lot of wire.
So, it's, it's a bigger project, I think, than, it's taken them a longer time. He still anticipates, uh, middle October, so our goal for the operation.
Thank you.
So, so this grant, um, when the application's submitted, any concrete amount, whether we're?
They're supposed to let us know in October.
Really?
They have, they basically, Kevin said they're gonna turn them around this month and they're gonna let everybody know the same day.
They're not, these aren't terribly competitive at this point, right?
No, I, I think everybody, no, the first one wasn't competitive either. I mean, it was $20,000 a building, you know, this one's, uh, first student and the thing about it is the, like the lady, uh, Kristen said, "We wanna give you the money, so even if you don't do a good job, we'll tell you what to fix and we'll give you the money." So I would say it's definitely not competitive, 'cause, you know, otherwise they'd say they fixed it. But we wanna give you the money, we'll get it in your name, so.
Thank you.
You'll, you'll get it and hopefully I won't have any issues with what we're doing.
Any other questions, for? We'll move on. Item eight B, discussion, the public forum response. Um, everybody received that in their packet. I did also reach out to Mr. Pope. He's not in the audience, is he? No, okay. Um, I did give him a call, I did not get a response back from him. I told him if he had further questions, he could call me. So, we basically prepared the packet once, I'm sorry, Brent, what was our lawyer's name?
Tom Grace.
Okay.
And basically, what I did was I sent the concerns that were raised in the newspaper from Mr. Pope and basically it centered around... from Mr. Polk's, and basically, it centered around us not providing proper notice of what we did with the energy efficiency project. But I think the big item of confusion for the public is, is that the Mosenee Times is not our official paper, and there actually is no official paper for the school district. So basically, when we look at like one of the timelines, we made a decision on Tuesday at a big public meeting on the following Monday, well, there was no way you could put it in the Mosenee Times because the Mosenee Times, its cutoff time is Tuesday. So I mean, some of that, I think, is just people not understanding the law. And the thing I've made a point note is Tom Griggs has been doing this for like 40 years. He doesn't handle divorces, he doesn't have liability claims, he doesn't handle court case, he doesn't do anything other than municipal law, so he, he actually sends us each day, it's like, if there's something due, he sends Amy and I both something saying, "Brent and Amy, you make sure you got this done." You know, I mean, so like I say, I feel confident that, you know, we've obviously followed the law using a good attorney to do this.
Yes, Brent.
So what was provided in, in the board packet here is the attorney, the letter from Attorney Griggs to Brent, and a copy of a letter that Mr. Polk sent. What was sent to Mr. Polk's, or are we just relying on you leaving him a voicemail?
We sent him, or actually, he came into our office, Cory, and picked the paperwork up from us.
Picked up, what Attorney Griggs said?
Yep. Yeah, basically, it was his response to his letter.
A response to the letter and also a copy of Ann's contract.
Yep, too.
That's what he asked for, and I did not hear anything back, and you had not...
He didn't contact me, Cory, he's a virginite also, so I didn't hear anything back.
Okay. So again, that was just a discussion item.
So Brent, what I'm hearing from you is that as of this time, or as of always, we have never had a paper on record.
True.
Okay.
And we've courteously, as a courtesy, always put stuff in the Times, but the thing is that some things you can't put in them just because of the timeline. You know, in this instance, it wouldn't have paid to put it in the following week, we had a meeting the prior, prior Monday, because then people said, "Well, gosh, were these guys that dumb that they're telling us about a meeting three days later?"
And Brent, was that, do we...
Yeah, it makes sense.
Do we have to? Do districts have to have a...
No.
Okay. All right, we are moving on to item 8C, discussion.
Oh, I was just asking, the minutes reflect Kelly's questions, so they are recorded in our minutes?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
Item 8C, discussion, impossible decision, legal counsel selection. In your packet, I did ask Brent to kind of call around and also get some other costs from other attorneys, so you all have that in front of you. This time, I'm opening up the floor for discussion. Cory.
So you contacted four area schools and they're preparing an order from 2:00 to 2:95, or you contacted the attorneys?
Four areas.